How was Nicole's first day at school?
It was good.
Yeah? How many hour, I mean, how long is she, what time does she go and when does she get back?
Uh, she's gone full-time and she was back.
Oh, okay. So her first one since then?
I don't know. Her mom. I just make sure she, if she had driven Corpus too much.
Oh, okay.
So that was my concern.
Yeah.
I was supposed to get that from the parking spot and squeeze. Different things, saw some kids from here.
She's in demo?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, good. At least that's just right there.
Yeah. I tell you, start giving a little bit more comfort while instead of coming home, I'm sure you'll be at the mall.
Yeah, exactly. She'll figure it out. That's for sure.
Call to order a special meeting of the City Council here in Aransas Pass, Texas, 600 West Cleveland Boulevard, August 29, 2016, at 7:00 p.m. All rise for the invocation, please.
Lord, we'd like to give you thanks for all the blessings bestowed upon us as a community. We ask you to please watch over our kids as they start the new school year. Bless the teachers that are teaching them. We ask you to watch over the ones that don't feel so well. We ask you to take care of their caregivers. We ask you to give strength to the ones that need it the most. We ask you to get people to realize when it's time to be humble, to stay humble. We ask you for you to guide us as a council as we move on to move the city forward, to work as one unit. All of this in your name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the mission of liberty and justice for all.
This is going to bring us to item five, the consent agenda. All of the following items are consent agenda considered to be routine by the City Council will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. We have items five-one and five-two.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second?
All fair say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Lawrence?
Thank you, Mayor. Item six-one is a public hearing, which I declare to be open now to discuss the second public hearing on the 2016 year tax rate.
Mayor and council, good evening. As discussed in our last meeting, valuations for the 2016 property tax year dropped slightly, which leads our effective tax rate to go from .680354 to .688655. The staff is recommending the effective tax rate, which is the same amount of money that would be brought in, that was brought in last year based on the tax rate, as opposed to the rollback rate, which is the effective rate plus eight percent.
Members of the council, have any questions or comments?
No, sir.
No.
Anyone in the audience have any questions or comments? Seeing none in this public hearing is closed, and item six-eleven is the second public hearing on the Aransas Pass operating budget for fiscal year 2016 to 2017.
Thank you, Ellen. Mayor and council, this is the budget book that was prepared for you last meeting. It is available to the general public on the website. If you just click on the link that says, "Click here, click here," both the budget and the capital plan, as required by statute, are presented. The, there are some minor adjustments from last week's, and those are noted in a footnote at the bottom of the document. There are changes in general fund revenue. There was an increase in revenue in franchise fees. There was a decrease in the city secretary fund. There was an increase in the fire department fund, and there was a modification in the Harbor Master salary. So we can go over those, we'll go over those in a PowerPoint presentation quickly before we head into the capital plan. As mentioned, the steady tax rate, this is year three, that we have not proposed a tax rate increase, even with the small $6 million valuation drop. We've been able to keep within the .68 range. This budget includes the first three percent of the general fund that's required. That is about $240,000. It does not add up to exactly three percent because our general fund revenues are mixed. Water sewer funds, there's enterprise funds. I can do an itemized detail for anybody who has questions on exactly where that $240,000 comes from. We are seeing increased healthcare costs of 12 percent. I'm sorry, I was looking at it from the notes page. We are seeing increased healthcare costs of about 12 percent. So what that has prompted us to do is remove the city-paid dental and vision. Those will be voluntary benefits to the employees. And we're also going to streamline some of our optional benefits to reduce the employee cost on our end of trying to keep up with various packages. This budget does include the recreation of a park and mowing division. General fund revenues are 9.8. The prior presentation showed 9.645, and that was, we needed to correct the estimate in the franchise fees line item. Expenditures also went up 9.835. There was an increase in fire department, the labor costs. There was a slight decrease in city secretary, and the Harbor Master has opted out of the insurance allocation, so there is a change in his salary amount. The highlights, it eliminates all of the outside engineering. It creates a maintenance superintendent who will be in charge of our pumps, our lift stations, all of our city maintenance, anything and everything that has to do with things that need to be repaired. Mr. Gomez has a monumental task in front of him. We are adding one additional fire personnel that will serve as an inspector slash assistant chief, as mentioned before, recreation of parks and mowing. And it does have an elimination of the transfer from the water sewer fund. As I mentioned before, prior budget showed a transfer from water sewer of $750,000 to the general fund. But then the general fund would turn around and pay debt service of $794,000. So that was not a real transfer. So we're trying to keep things clear and transparent. For those residents who aren't aware, this is the city organizational chart. The city attorney, city manager, judge, and city secretary all report to the council. Budgets by division. The city secretary has a reduction to 191, 614. That does include council discretionary for items like the Fourth of July. That includes items for the nonprofits that come in request dollars from the city council. City manager, 250, 201, which also includes contract staff. The city attorney does not have a particular line item. He's budgeted in various departments as he serves. It's basically an internal service fund. Public safety now includes police, fire, emergency management, and ambulance service, as well as animal control. Police, 38 staff, and you'll see the police department budget is a little over $3 million. So when you take into account police and fire of a little over a million point zero two, you're at about $4.1 million. The entire ad valorem tax that the city brings in is about 3.9 million. So everything else has to be made up in fees and user fees. Emergency management, that is Mr. Lynn Pierce. He's a one-man show, 128,000. Ambulance service, which includes our contractual obligation to Tri-County, is 138. Animal control, we've added an additional animal control officer. That brings that budget to 117. Finance, conversion to the new software. We have a goal this year of improved customer service and improved transparency in all of our dealings. We did have quite a bit of folks arguing about their meters, so we're going to try to be better about that this year. We have four people in accounts payable, accounts receivable totaling 233, five. Six people in the utilities business office totaling 150, and three people in the meter reading office totaling 75, 691. Information technology, improved internal customer service. Jeff's group really reports to everybody within City Hall every time we make a call about why we can't get on the network, or what's wrong with the phone, or hell, even my computer's not plugged sometimes with the phone calls he gets. Our goal this year is connecting all of the city offices. A lot of our outside areas are still not connected. That has been a huge undertaking, as well as the software conversion. And I'll show you the dollars that you programmed in 2014, how they're coming to fruition now. Community enrichment, what I call the fun stuff, includes library, civic, aquatic, parks activities, and the senior center. Our goals there include a continued partnership with the county for the senior center partnership, improved electronic access at the library, and expanded amenities in community park. Library has three staff at almost 162,000. Senior center has one staff at a little over 50. The aquatic center still continues a loss of 351,5. Again, that does not include the debt service, and that is a loss that is subsidized by the general fund. The civic center has four staff with operating expenses of 374, 290. The civic center operates at a zero loss because it has an MDD, a municipal development district, contribution of approximately $250,000. You have not seen the MDD budget nor the crime control budget. You will see those budgets in the next meeting date. Development services includes comprehensive planning, public works and building. This is where the additional maintenance superintendent for the pumps and lift station is found, and it's funded from the general fund and the water sewer fund. Streets, drainage, and water will now be under one operating division. Seven people in parks and right-of-way mowing, a little under $389,000. Public health, that's mosquito control usually, $45,000. Facilities of 101,000, and that includes utilities and things to the offices. Streets and drainage, a little under a million. You will see that most of the equipment and the materials are going to be incorporated into bond proceeds, and you'll see that later on in the capital plan. The building division has three people, a little shy of $160,000. This is the water sewer fund that brings in about $4.4 million to the city. It includes our purchase of water, which totals about one and a half million dollars. This is the little bit of a sore spot when folks have a water leak and perhaps don't take care of it and want us to waive some of the costs of that. The city purchases every drop of water from the San Francisco Water District at a cost of almost a million and a half. We paid debt for water and sewer lines of $794,000 a year. And we have three people that are financed out of the administration budget of about $250,000. Water distribution lines, staff in that total 256,000. The sewer collection is about 530,000, and sewer treatment is about 489,000. The harbor fund is a, what we call a special revenue fund. It brings in money. It is a little bit self-sustaining. It has some monies to transfer into the general fund, but then the general fund just turns around and pays those to environmental projects. We've got a lot of cleanup still to do, and you'll see that in the bond monies coming up here in just a second. The goals this year are correcting our lease boundaries, which are, let's just say colorful right now. We need to complete our seagrass mitigation, which council will see an executive action item on that at the next council meeting. And obviously, to seek development opportunities. And I'm going to show you a new marketing campaign that we've just launched as part of an approved council site selector magazine a few council meetings back. The hotel motel fund continues gaining strength. We do have the new motel coming in. That will not be realized until probably next year. Council will also see another item in executive session for another proposed hotel who is seeking development participation. That has a balance of 14,201, assuming we can expand the fireworks show to bring in folks from out of town for an additional $20,000. The MDD, this is a half-cent sales tax. Most of the MDD money goes to pay for the bond payment, as well as the civic center deficit. And again, you will see that budget in September. Crime control and prevention, also a half-cent sales tax. They provide $760,000 that is proposed in this coming budget to the police department. You will also see that budget in September. That's the regular budget. I'm going to jump into the capital improvement budget, which is really what makes the rest of the world go round. And I'm going to start off with a little bit of history. I came in, and the city had already sold $4.4 million. That was secured by the water sewer fund. 2.2 million of that were to go to replace the elevated storage tank. 1.8 million of that was to settle the lawsuit between Ingleside and the city of Aransas Pass for FM 2725. And 400,000 of that was to go to automated meter reading. We did not need the complete elevated tank replacement, so we did a $1.2 million repair to all three tanks, the elevated and the two ground storage. And we reprogrammed $1 million into the water sewer fund, adding an additional 400,000 to automated meter reading, 580,000 to FM 1069 expansion, and $20,000 to matching funds. Here's the part where, I think this is the part that's relevant, that we've taken on since I've been on board. This is bond series, what we call 2015. You took action on this in 2014. We have two series issuance in 2015 that are called 2015. Part one is the nine and a half million dollars that we pledged, and that's a combination of tax and other revenues. We were able to secure that debt at 1.89. The council said 2 million of that should go to economic development. 1.5 was programmed to the ConBrowne Harbor cleanup. However, ConBrowne Harbor took 1.84. The downtown was to receive $500,000 of that. There is, because of the ConBrowne Harbor overspend, there is 154,670 left in that line item for downtown revitalization. General administration, this was the IT improvements that we talked about, city connectivity in the capital budget. So far, we've expensed 211, 330, and that includes new software. That includes connection to the library and aquatic center and some of our other outlying areas. You have a potential encumbrance today of $75,000 that you'll see later on in the council agenda packet, and that is the security cameras in the outlying parks that will catch all of those darn graffiti folks. That would leave 13, 670 in that line item. We put $3 million into water sewer capacity for both Highland-Johnson and Rhodes and Beasley. If council recalls, our conversation was to protect our CCN boundaries, and the first one we needed to protect was our Ingleside boundary. So Highland-Johnson has come in at 1.577 million. That means there's an overspend of 77,000 in that line item. Rhodes and Beasley had a program of 1.5 million. However, that estimate has come in at 1.9 million. And that's mostly because those roads do not exist. There's almost nothing to reuse with our zipper and our material. So the staff and I are going to go back to the drawing board and see how we can cut that deficit back. Infrastructure streets, this is the part that makes everybody so excited. The council programmed 3 million dollars. We have yet to really touch that 3 million dollars because there has not been a plan in front of you. We were trying to address drainage and water and sewer and everything altogether. And so here is the plan. We have expensed equipment of about $450,000. We have pledged to tech stop for the one-mile hike and bike trail that's going to connect the library and all of our schools, 250,000. So that leaves, we've expensed a little under $700,000. The proposal in front of you, the council has the opportunity to yea or nay any one of these street projects, but after our two workshops, this is what shook out. This was the direction the council sent. Highland, after the sewer expansion is put in, there is a 250,000, $215,000 street repair bill. Highland drainage is 336,000. Johnson, after the sewer is put in, has a repair bill of $150,000. And Rhodes and Beasley combined, and this is just streets. This is not the underground infrastructure that you saw on the prior slide, combined $500,000. And then we have Matlock at $170,000. You're going to see Matlock present in this next bond sale that you'll see, that we come up on the next slides, because there's a lot of infrastructure that ties in at the Matlock end. Here's the Ebert spine that we talked about that would open up Ebert all the way down into the new proposed subdivision that is also going to be in front of you at the very next public hearing. And then that leaves $439,000 for the variety of streets that are in front of you. Everything from Porpoise to Guile that requires at least a minimum overlay or will at least get us some longevity of at least 10 years onto those streets. This is with staff doing the work. This is not outsourcing any of this work. This is utilizing the equipment and the manpower that was in front of you in the prior budget. We had park improvements in that series one of 1.2 million. So far, we've expensed 696,000. Tonight, we will encumber, assuming the council approves it, 116,000 for plumbing and electrical at the pad site, and 254.7 in fencing. That's going to basically replace all of the fencing at the Little League, the adult softball field, the netting around the skate park, the batting cages. Every single piece of fence that you see out of community park is included in that 254,000. That leaves 113.2 in the park improvement line item. However, there's still plumbing and electrical that needs to be run to the dog park. So Bond Series Part Two was 2.2 million that was issued, and that bought the fire truck that we allocated $750,000 for. We've expensed 681, and in the draft budget, there are capital expenses that the fire department still needs totaling 68, 931, and that would completely expense the fire truck item. We did purchase the fleet of vehicles and equipment and machinery, mowers, and that is 1.5 million, and all of that has been expensed. Here comes the good part. Well, it's all good part, but this is what we call Bond Series 2017. This was just issued. This was a 2.8 million dollar issue. We actually made money issuing debt, and we had a little over 3 million issued into the account. The project list includes Drainage Basin Number One, which is the King Street Lift Station Repair Upgrade and the King Ditch Regrate. I see a typo. And it repairs that outfall at that railroad crossing. When we talked in our workshops, you saw that entire portion of the county that doesn't drain, and it backs up to staff, and it backs up to 13th, and then back around into DeBerry. That's an estimate of $550,000. Drainage Basin Number Two includes Staff Ride and McCambe, and it includes a ditch regrate all the way to staff. So that's estimated at $350,000. Drainage Basin Number Three is 13th Street, and it's Lenoir to Greenwood, and it includes a ditch regrate, and I missed that, but that is also $350,000. Drainage Basin Number Four, this would reopen that huge Saunders ditch that we talked about that's all the way from Greenwood to DeBerry that right now is supposed to be a receiving ditch, but does not catch any receiving waters. That is an estimated half-million-dollar project. We are committed to the sewer overflow program. And if you recall, during times of our high rain, we have sewer overflows, especially in the Greenwood area. So we've allocated $310,000 in partnership with the state to take care of that area between McCambe and Houston. The money that you just spent on the wastewater treatment plant upgrades will also help take care of some of the overflow because we've added capacity. That's materials of 1.96 with labor of 1.1 totaling that 3.6 million that the council just had deposited into the account. I'm supposed to give you a machinery condition report. Given the fact that I didn't even have an inventory of what machinery we had, I will tell you what we've had in the last two years has almost all been replaced. We are still in need of a bucket truck and some various mowers that would be a little bit more efficient, a street sweeper. If I was queen for a day, I'd get a brush mulcher, but that's an $850,000 expense. So what does capital improvements look like post-2017? You had bond council tell you that we have situated the debt so that we don't go out and borrow more than we can, number one, do. Two, can pay back in case development doesn't take off. And three, how much, you know, how fast do you eat that elephant? And we've got a very huge elephant to eat, but you know, you can only do it one bite at a time. So we've set the debt model so that in every three years, there's several million dollars there in borrowing capacity that would not increase our tax rate. But all of that should come with a comprehensive plan. That's where the Planning Commission and the City Council need to sit down and have another joint workshop as to where it is we want the city to grow. What we've done with these capital improvements is really just repair and replace. Ebert is really, Ebert, Rhodes, and Beasley are the first spines heading in the direction of Ingleside, and we've talked about Young and Moore and those others that are heading in the direction of Rockport. And if you really think of the city in terms of its growth pattern, you see the various spines that need to develop in order for those, all of those capillaries to spread out and create a functioning city. We have quite a bit of ways to go, but I think we're in the right direction. I would never ask the council to take on more than I think we can handle. I think the staff's already shaking in their boots with all of the work that we have in front of us right now, and considering that we're planning to do all of it in-house, or if not 95% of it, it is a massive undertaking, so I would ask that you be patient with us. So I would ask that you be patient with us. Any questions?
Members of the council, have any questions or comments?
And what we have is addressing the major issues that we have with the flooding, right?
Correct. That very first Drainage Basin Number One is, is kind of where the backup is.
Have we started a PM schedule on the existing equipment that we purchased?
There is an existing PM schedule, yes, sir. I can have. Yes, sir, there isn't a formal preventive maintenance program now.
Yes, there is a schedule that's being done. Mr. Gomez has instituted it, and he's got it to work. He's checking all the lift stations, all the pump stations on a regular basis. They don't go every day, but they do every, every other day, every three days to make sure everything is functioning. We're predicted to get an inch and a half of rain today, so they were out there making sure that all the pumps are ready and filled with fuel.
I was talking, more like our utility equipment, like our trucks and tractors.
He's, he's got all that on Excel files, so that way he can check to make sure they're, they're being done. And all the employees are required, every day before they, they leave the yard, they're supposed to fill out a vehicle maintenance. And then when they come back, they're supposed to fill it again. If there's any issues, they're supposed to report it right then and there.
And all the pumps are working?
All the pumps are working as much as they can. Some of them are, are in our last legs, but we've got them going.
Any other questions or comments? Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments in regard to the operating budget for this coming fiscal year? If not, then I'll declare the, the public hearing closed, and I would point out to the council under items 6.1B tax rate ordinance 2016, 4162, and under item 6.2B budget ordinance 2016, 4163, you can act on both of those at the same time.
Alan, are they able to act on the budget ordinance if we have not adopted the crime control or municipal development district ordinance?
Well, they're on, it's, it's on the agenda that, that way. If need be, you could always come back and amend, I would assume.
Yeah, I, I don't see it having a negative impact. If nothing else, we can amend it as necessary. What's programmed into the budget is what the proposed committees have discussed.
So you have item 6.1B and 6.2B.
Alan, are they, are they considered an act, or are they just public hearings at this point?
Well, I would assume they're action items the way that they're on the, on the agenda.
I don't know if I'm just missing it, I'm just going to see.
Yeah, I see, I see a public hearing and setting the rate, and then I see the ordinance. I think we missed the consider an act language on there. I think that's our, our bat on the wording.
So we do, we do have me next Monday, next Tuesday, right?
We do, and we have, we have until September 30th to adopt.
Okay, well then, then you can just pass on those. Item 6.3 is public hearing on the petition by Gallagher Builders for annexation of 24.61 acres out of lots 1 through 7, land block 75, TB McCambele subdivision located west of South Avenue A and north of Highland Avenue. Yes, sir.
Eric Council, what you have before you is a petition for annexation by Gallagher Builders. You reviewed this preliminary plat and development agreement several months ago, and this is just the first phase of what their proposal is doing is annexing or requesting that 24 and a half acres of their first phase be annexed into the city. And from there, they're going to develop the, I think it's 88 single-family residential lots. And they're going to put in public water and public waste water, and there'll be a lift station on the property to help it up. So today is for the annexation, and on September the 12th, they'll be going to the planning commission for their rezoning because when it annexes into the city, it's annexed as residential, so they're going to go in as a planned development district and the first phase of their. Any questions?
Have you had any problems or people saying they have any issues with it?
We have not heard anything from anybody. We'll find out.
It's in the county right now, so it has no zoning designation. The, the public comment actually happens after you annex it, and then after we go through the public hearing process. So folks may not have said anything yet, but.
Correct.
At the, at the rezoning, that's when all the people within 200 feet will be notified.
So when you're driving down Avenue A, let's say if we approve the, the annexation, just to kind of clarify, when you're driving down A, Avenue A, it doesn't even, everything on one side is going to be the county up until you hit just before DeBerry, then you'll come in the city and then leave the city? Is that correct?
Correct.
All right.
Eventually, it'll all be in the city.
Sure, absolutely.
Miguel, I have a question. How come only part of the roadway until a certain point is annexed was not?
Because the, on the, what would be the northern portion of that, they only own up to the center line of that roadway. The other center line, the other part of the road is owned by the other property owners. And further south, they own both sides of the, of the road, so they get to close both sides. We will be coming to the council for closure of what'd be the extension of Ebert. To answer your question?
Yeah, this just, this will create some problems later on.
Well, it's an unimproved road.
Do you build the whole road at the same time?
I don't know.
We'd have to get the county involved, and so it's easier once we annex it to just the city to, and close that portion of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Miguel. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the, in the audience have any questions or comments in regard to the petition by Gallagher Builders for annexation? If not, then this public hearing is closed.
Liberty goes to item 4, 6.4, Consider An Act on the Petition of Gallagher Builders. Is there a motion for approval for item 6.4?
Yeah, I'll make a motion we approve item 6.4.
I second.
All the first say aye. Sylvia, you're up. It's been a while.
As participants in Texas Municipal League, you are required to consider an act on nominations to the TML Intergovernmental Risk Pool. We do receive our insurance, health insurance coverage and some of our liability insurance coverage by TML. Recommendations are Place Six, Kyle Young; Place Seven, CJ Wax of Rockport; Place Eight, Jim Cox; and Place Nine, Andres Garza. There's a bio on each one of those folks if you are so interested.
Is there a motion to approve the, for item Place Six, Seven, and Eight?
Yeah, I'd like a motion we approve item 7.1.
Second the motion.
All the first say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Item 7.2 is, this is the Consider An Act on the Plumbing and Electrical Work in Community Park in an amount not to exceed $116,065. We did go out for bids. Eli is available for comments. We had three respective bidders. The highest bid was FSG at $134,435, and the lowest bid was CNI Electric at $116,065. The bids were done in such that we had alternates and we had addendums. This is in a floodway, so it's very important that you be able to disconnect and protect all of the devices. And so the electricity portion is a little bit more expensive than we had perhaps hoped, but it does protect folks from electrocuting themselves in an event such as shrimpery.
And this is just for the pad site, is that correct?
Just for the pad sites.
Is there running any other electrical for the other tents or anything? Who's FSG?
Both are companies out of Corpus Christi.
CNI, what's that stand for?
Good question.
CNI? What does it stand for, though? The name of the company?
The initial C, what does it stand for?
I have no clue. The, the bid packages are available for inspection. None of these are local companies.
If you can come up to the mic, appreciate it.
Eli de la Cruz. Yes, on CNI, I, I used to work with them more in Kingsville also. In fact, all these three bidders that we had on this project, so I was very pleased that we had Scott Electric and FSG and CNI, they're all electrical groups that I had worked with when I was at Texas A&amp;M Kingsville, you know. So they've all been around a long time, they're reputable contractors, and, but I was just using CNI, so.
That's why I was curious, because the accident initials throw me off.
I'll check them out.
What are the plans for using the red pad besides just for the shrimpery? What else, if we're spending that money, what else is it, the plans for that?
That is supposed to be a soccer field. Those pad sites are for the bleachers, eventually for the soccer field.
Do we have dimensions on the so-called soccer field?
The soccer field already exists there. The lights that are there all encompass the current soccer field. We're not expanding any additional. It's what's already there.
It used to be soccer fields.
Yes. And we have purchased the soccer goals. They're, they're part of the package of all of the equipment that we bought for Community Park. So we do have the goals, and I believe we have the bleachers as well, but I'll need to go back and double-check on the bleacher.
Do we still have a soccer league locally?
We do not have an Aransas Pass Soccer League that I'm aware of. We have an Ingleside Tri-City. But the bleachers, the dimensions of the field are the same as what had been there before, and the goals for the soccer are portable, they're movable. So if we choose to use it as a youth football field, for example, or we choose to use it for some other kind of spectator sport, it allows for us to move those goal fields out of the way.
Thank you, Eli.
Who's the favor of the council for item 17?
I'll make a motion we accept a CNI electric bid of $116,065 for the community park electrical and plumbing work.
Second the motion.
All the first say aye.
Item 7.3 is Consider An Act on Awarding a Contract for Fencing in an Amount Not to exceed 254.716. We had two responsive bidders, one of which is S&amp;J Fence Company, and the other, S&amp;J is out of Corpus Christi, and the other M&amp;M Construction is a local Roland Penya, actually. The skate park, the fencing in skate park, the dog park, and all of the responsive areas in Community Park all went out separately. That way, we could sort of cherry pick the lowest bid and see who had the best bang for the city. The dog park area, as you can see, 10.8. The parking lot area, which is that portion of fence that is adjacent to the handicap parking along where all of the kiddie playground equipment is. There's a large portion of fence that's missing there that would replace that. The skate park netting is $12,000, replacing the batting cage, $7,300. Replacing entirely ball field one, $50,200, ball field two, $55,600, ball field three, $58,000, for a total of $197,670 to S&amp;J Fence Company. They did also bid on ball field four and ball field five. However, their bid was about $20,000 higher at $47,000 for each ball field. The next lowest bidder was Roland Penya at M&amp;M Construction at $28,523 for a total bid of $254,716. Mr. Penya has requested that the council waive his requirement for providing workman's compensation citing statutory, statutory regu, statute. I'm, I'm not on tonight. Citing regulations requiring less than five people not be required to carry workman's comp insurance. He has told us he will have less than five people working on the job.
What would be the ramification to the city if something were to happen there?
Obviously, the city is liable. First, we would go, he has to provide, he provided a bid bond and he provided insurance. So obviously, that's going to be the first place we go.
Sylvia, now this is a full demo of everything that's existing and.
Yes, Eli, you want to, you want to discuss the fencing?
The workman's comp is in the specifications, so if you want him to have it, you know, he, he will be required to have it, you know, whether if he wants to or not, you know. And if, and if not, then he'll lose his bid bond, you know. As far as the, the work is concerned, I had met originally with some people out there to see if we could kind of like piecemeal the work and try to stabilize, and what could we salvage and all that. And I had a pre-construction meeting with several bidders that, there were about four companies that were representing, you know. And they, they were, they just felt that would not work because they said, well, you know, I'm going to say this here, but he's going to say this over here, and there's four of these here, and he says, so what decided to do is to, is to bid, to get new on, on everything. And said, and if that would not work, then we would have to make a night of my solace, okay, we want three posts replaced, and go, go through that again, you know. However, I'm very pleased, again, that we, not all of them responded to, to getting the, the new work. However, again, S&amp;J is a reputable company that's been around forever also, does this kind of work, and they're familiar with it. Roland Penya may not be in the business, but at least I guess his heart is there. So we're hoping that, that if he's approved, that he would do a good job, you know.
So if we award him that bid, then he has to get workers' comp if the bid required it, correct?
You have a bid package in front of you that requires workman's comp. The section that he's citing is a portion of the law that would exempt him from, if the council so chooses to exempt him from such a requirement.
In other words, the state is not requiring it, but whether.
The city is.
You know, that's a different story.
And he placed a bid bond in the amount of, Mary, do you recall what that?
Twenty-eight hundred dollars.
Twenty-eight hundred dollars. So if he has awarded the bid and does not get the workman's comp that's required, he loses his bid bond of $2,800.
I've been talking to him, and I, and I think he might be willing to go ahead and, and bite the bullet and go ahead and get the workman's comp insurance. and go ahead and get the workman's comp insurance. You know, again, if he decided that he has to have it. But it is in the specifications.
Is there any timeframe as far as when the work should be completed? Was that in the...
Start to finish. On that one, there's some fields that have been used through the end of December, and the Little League fields won't be starting until March of 1st. So that's kind of like the timetable that they have. However, I'm having a pre-construction meeting with them. With that group, I'm meeting Wednesday morning. The other group, it's going to be Thursday now. But I've got a pretty extensive pre-construction agenda, and one of them is that before we give them a notice to proceed is that we want, you know, certain items, you know, which, like whatever insurance is required, liability insurance for sure, you know. And, but one of the things is that we wanted to give us a written material on how they're going to approach how to do the job and what their timetable is on everything, and a schedule of values, you know. So when they come and ask for money, they already say, "Well, this was worth $5,000, and we don't want to be asking for 10, you know. You said $5,000, this is what you're going to ask for, you know." And so that's, we're going to go through a very extensive list through that, you know, for detail this when I meet with them, you know.
I just know from the Little League, even though the season doesn't start, but the, I know the board and, you know, they start having like, what is it, tryouts and things like that around February. So I would think they would need to be finished before the, I would say, the end of January, not the first of the year. Because they start already preparing. The players aren't there for games until March, but they still start for tryouts and things like that.
When does the season end for the Little League? Because it's the adult league that goes through December, so...
They're not there right now, I don't think. It's over.
A Little League's over with already.
Okay, so they could potentially start in the next two weeks?
Yeah, they could start right now, yeah.
Okay.
And I did not have that information at the time, so I put March of 1st, you know. However, we did, I did put on there that they needed to work with the owner in, you know, appeasing for the schedule.
Because I know they, I would say by the end of January, the MAC did not earlier. I would think the timeframe would have to be on there. Especially on that, as far as Roland, I don't know if he's going to continue on what, when he starts using the fields against adults.
Yeah, they, there's, they don't use them every day either, you know, so they think that they're going to be... For example, some of the posts, you know, they can't put them because of the sand and all that. So they're going to put them in different locations. They'd be putting a lot of the posts in place even while they're using the fields, you know. And then, the day that they're going to put in the fence, you know, which might be on the day that they're not playing, two, three days they're not playing, you know, then they can pull the fences all the way around. But probably that would set the posts in concrete and all that.
What about getting rid of all the waste? Is that something they're going to take care of?
That's incumbent upon them.
They're not going to put it in our...
No, they have to. That's in the bid package as well. Now, we did have Roland submit what we called non-responsive. The only thing that was responsive to this bid was the actual bid package and the documents in the bid package. No extra stuff. Well, he gave us extra stuff about what he wanted to do with the waste. And we said, "No, you have to dispose of it according to the bid package." So he's agreed. He's been speaking to Eli.
Yeah, and also what I'm going to cover at the pre-construction meeting is that they give the city some opportunity. If the city decides that they want some posts for this or that, or want to keep some fence and all that, that they can go ahead and pick them up and take them out. But every, whatever's left there, the contractor has to get rid of it. It's going to be their cost. And then that's in the specifications, and we're going to cover it again in the pre-construction meeting.
So a little bit off subject, could we give her any consideration to put in fencing around Veterans Park?
No, that is not in...
I know it's not here, but it's something to think about. Thank you, Eli. Appreciate it, sir. With the favor of the council, item 73. I make a motion we approve item 73.
What would the comp for?
With the insurance for M&amp;M.
Second the motion.
All first say aye.
Aye.
Senator Cruz, item 9, 9-1, Consider An Act on Amendment of the Code of Ordinances. Consider An Act on Ordinance Amended to Code of Ordinances, Article 8, Flood Damage Prevention, Section 5 through 116, Basis for Establishment Areas for Special Flood Hazard. Begin.
This is an amendment to the flood plain, or flood damage prevention ordinance in the City Code of Ordinances. What it mainly does, it gets us a little closer to our CRS, Community Rating System. And it, what it does, it does some modification to identify the different counties that the City of Aransas Pass is and adopts their, the ones that are dubbed it, the flood plain or the flood maps, adopts those and all, and whatever studies were included in that. So that's, it's a minor amendment, but it had to been done.
Are there any questions from council?
This also begins our establishment of joining the Community Rating System, the CRS, which puts us into repetitive loss scenarios if we continue to have areas. It opens up some potential funding. It also opens up studies and gives us a potential break on our flood hazard insurance.
I hear a motion for approval for item 9-1?
Well, I make a motion that we approve item 9-1.
Second.
All first say aye.
Aye.
Senator Cruz, item 12.
Assistant Mayor and Council, this item is still to be introduced in our budgeting talks about creating a citywide camera network mainly covering some of the parks, the Little League Park, the pool in Johnson, as well as Veterans Memorial Park as well. These cameras, some, and the Harbor Point Park as well. Veterans Memorial and Harbor Point Park will each have their cameras, cameras as well as handheld zoom cameras that can be manipulated and stuff. The Little League will have handheld zoom, and there will also be another one by the pool area. These cameras will all link in directly into the police department and infrastructure that we already have in place. We won't be having an expanded structure to accommodate the addition. This also includes several cameras here that we are lacking around the municipal buildings here that need to be added or replaced. This includes those as well. And it also comes with expansion capabilities...
I'm sorry, it also comes with expansion capabilities for additional cameras in the future. Anything specific that you may have? I have my IT guy here, David Alfalter, to answer any of those particular questions, if any are posed.
I just have a question. So are we going to have someone that's, that is going to monitor these? Or is it just going to be like, if something happens, that we can go back and look at the footage?
Currently, we do have, all cameras are monitored through dispatch. I mean, there's no way I can have staff focus on watching them. But if you ever tour the PD and go into dispatch, there are monitors that are focused on those cameras. We will continue that practice. It'll also give us mobile capability as well to watch from anywhere else. And if we do have to go back, we will be able to go back. The other thing, just to point out that you kind of hinted me towards, is it will also allow us, if we lose connectivity, we'll be able to store that video locally, and then when connectivity comes back, it'll upload. And we also will have a mobile camera of same quality, and it will have two different methods of connecting to the police department. One using Rockport Wi-Fi and the other using cellular data. It'll take whichever signal's available, and we will be able to remotely place that camera anywhere that may need be around town. And these are, I believe, HD quality. With the newest, latest technology and compression to kind of hold off on some of the bandwidth, so it's not so hungry on data. But it's much overdue. I think that will benefit from them.
How long does it store the data?
That's dependent on how big we are in-house here in the police department. How far back can we go right now, David?
I know we can go about three, three months.
Oh, okay.
It will depend on how high quality we started to do it.
Now, is there any, you know, what is it, potential of someone removing the cameras, damaging the cameras?
I thought the same thing when I saw the pictures of the show and everybody...
Yeah.
We're going to place most of the cameras out of reach. That's why they're going high. Actually, the lower we keep them, the better view we get. But we're going to try to keep them up higher, so it's harder for people to get to them. Some of the cameras here in this facility will be in vandal-proof type boxes. Also, we're looking at casings that could withstand the saltwater.
I was going to say bullet.
So with some of them being at the harbor, we'll have to worry about saltwater and stuff.
That's something that, you know, is a potential. I will tell you, Portland had one on a pole, and somebody ran into it, and it went over into the water. You know, I'm assuming to cover a crime or a track, but that's always a potential. These also come with a service agreement, because we're very paranoid about the salt air and the climate air. So we want to make sure that we're getting something that's going to hopefully last.
How many mobile units?
One mobile, like what you see on the screen, just one?
We're looking at a self-contained unit, like solar powered telescoping pole.
Good deal.
Thank you, David.
And council, just so you understand, this isn't purchasing. This is a request. Because as we were looking into this, it got larger and larger and more expensive. So we're over that threshold. We're asking for permission to go out for proposals on this job.
Are there any other questions, council?
Just have a question. Does this have any, what about Public Works?
Nothing right now as far as Public Works. I don't know if Public Works has their own system, but this doesn't include it. Now, can we add them later on? Absolutely.
Public Works has its own system right now, but it's all just in-house.
Gotcha.
There you go. Thanks, Jeff.
I hear a motion for approval for this item?
Well, I make a motion that we approve the police department's request for proposal for a citywide camera system.
Second.
All first say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Senator Cruz, item 12-T.
Mayor and Council, the fire department is asking you to consider an act on amending two sections of the Fire Protection Code, Section 920, adoption of fire protection. There's actually two parts that we're concerned about. A, the annual inspections, actually the timeline of how often people, how often occupancies are going to get an inspection. And then Section 5.2m is the fees that are associated with these inspections. For about the last three years, we've been, there's been an ordinance that says we're going to do inspections. It's pretty much straight across the board that everybody, every business is going to have an inspection every year for $125. So as you can see, there's a little bit of, you know, there's a little bit of inequity in that. And we've seen that with some of the businesses here lately, and then I'm sure you guys have caught wind of that. So we're addressing that tonight. What I'm asking is to actually allow us to instigate, or to put a fee schedule into the ordinance that allows, we're going to move all occupancies to a biannual inspection, where they're going to be inspected every two years. And this is, again, to kind of educate you a little bit, there's a difference in a pre-incident plan, planning, and then in a fire inspection. The fire inspections, we're really going through the detail. Fires, the pre-incident plan is the fire department's looking where your utilities are, contact information. Both very, very different. If you'll look on the second sheet here, you'll see what we have is the fee schedule. It may be actually your third sheet. So there's two columns there. So everybody, when they come in, nothing's really going to change when they're getting a permit for a new business, a new occupancy, a change of occupancy, or if they have remodeling greater than 50%. So this is something like, say, the McDonald's that just moved out here. So we knew it was a restaurant at one time. They vacinated it. Now it's a daycare. Well, I want to re-inspect that building because they've changed, they've changed that occupancy. Or actually, or if they remodeled it greater than 50%, they're going to add a whole new wing to it. The second section there is going to be the actual timeline. So you'll see, and it's very specific, this is an industry, these are set by industry standards. I use not only what you're seeing across the state of Texas, but really got a feel for what the local coastal bin's doing. And then our thresholds are what I think the Aransas Pass needs. So you'll see a lot of those moved to biannual. The only exception to this is going to be any target hazards. These are the faces, people that have higher hazards than usual. And then also, it's going, the only exception is going to be buildings that are going to require an annual inspection. They usually come to us. These are going to be the foster homes, schools, daycares, those type facilities. If you take a look at it, you'll see, I got a few of them highlighted. You have daycare facilities, educational foster homes, group homes, hospitals, and you'll see the associated fee. And those are all within line with industry standards. So at first glance, it looks a little bit complicated, but not only for the fire department, but for the end user, I think this is going to simplify it, because you look at this, you know exactly what this is. We're trying to clear that up, so if, when I was having the problems, is we'd go do, say, a small lease build out, an inspection that takes me 10 minutes. That was $125. I've got probably 20 hours invested in inspecting the four-story hotel that's being built. It's still not done, and that's $125. So we can see the difference there. That's not quite fair to the local businesses. Are there any questions I can answer about the fee schedule?
So, no, I just have, so all the businesses are going to be inspected though, correct?
Yes, they're all going to be on a biannual schedule. So every two years, you're going to be required to have one. But once you're already built, so say, you know, using like auto parts store, it's every two years, and it's at no cost to you. So very non-intrusive. You know, we're trying to make not only safer for the firefighters, safe for your business, and then we're trying to work on getting these insurance premiums down for every, the city.
So you just inspect one time, and, I mean, you don't even charge at all?
On the initial one, there will be a charge.
Sure, okay.
That's an initial for new, extended remodel. If you're an existing business, there won't be a fee.
There won't be a fee for that.
Well, okay, I understand. I just, you know, any business that takes the risk of the public, you know, we have to, you know, I have a business, and I didn't mind paying the fee. You know, I have the public, they come into my store, so I want to make sure they're as safe as possible. And, you know, there was a lot of stuff that was brought to light to where I needed to correct it, you know, for the public's benefit. I just...
Yes, sir. We appreciate, you know, we, for the most part...
You're in the minority, council.
Well, I...
He says that, but most people, once we, first off, it seems kind of, you know, there's something that's not happened before. Until about April this year, you know, while it was on the books, and these inspections weren't being done, we came in, in the fire department, we said, "Look, what we're supposed to be doing is, let's get out there and do them." We started doing that, and that was kind of an awakening for a lot of these businesses. And then on top of that, so, you know, sometimes, you know, the market's just not where you'd like it to be. And so I said, "Oh, and by the way, it's $125." We're trying to get that all right. And, you know, when we look at the scale of what these different cities are doing, you know, and I'll use Portland as an example. They don't charge any. They got the new construction, just like, you know, that we have in here. But, you know, after that, they don't charge anybody anything. Now, that's the loose side. Our book's the way they're written right now, on the very aggressive side, where it's every business, the same price. I think we got a nice little norm here that'll fit our city well.
So is there going to be any fine that they can incur if they don't have?
So if you look, one of those lines in there is going to be the reinspection fee. There actually is, there will even, a free inspection. So we come out and say, "Hey, you know, we might want to, you know, you need to address this. We'll come back out and check it for free. We'll actually come out a second time, because maybe you didn't understand the intent of what the inspection was." That third time, it's probably a non-compliance stuff, and you'll see there's actually a fee to that. If you turn to the second page of the inspection, you see about halfway down, the reinspection. It says third and subsequent reinfection, re-inspections.
We had an outcry on social media, and I think the explanation is it's as much for the protection of the firefighter going into the business to need to know what's in there as it is to the business to protect their general public and the folks that are using it. I think the, establishing the fee back to where it makes sense, those businesses are required every year. If you're a daycare and your license requires it, then yes, you should pay the fee. If you're a small business and you've never had one, we should come inspect you or pre-incident plan you, but perhaps not charge you a fee. And that's what Chief Cox... And that's what Chief Cox presented to you tonight.
Is there none other further questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Those are the counsel of this item.
I make a motion, we approve the amendments to the fire prevention code.
Second motion?
All first, aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Just gonna bring us item 13, our citizen comments. 808, course now open. Sweet, thank you. Thank you, Siri.
I did want to.
Anybody else who'd like to say anything? Yes, man, come on up.
I just wanted to remind y'all, first of all, that this weekend is the car show. Y'all were big supporters and sponsors of that. And for the record, we probably expect over 150 cars. We already have 17 food trucks signed up, paid and signed up, so we expect a big crowd. I think this year, we already have triple the amount of preregistrations that we had last year for the cars themselves, so it should be a really good event. I'm super excited that we have a food truck rally part in it this year, because a lot of people are engaging on our Facebook and they're really excited about it. So to me, that's really a good thing for arrantess pass, it's unique, and the fact that we could bring that here is pretty awesome. And I'm doing a good deed for that organization, because I'm on that committee and they asked me to bring your shirts. So if they're not the right size, it's not my fault.
You can, you can hand them to Mary, she'll, she'll get them to them.
And also, I wanted to give y'all this, since the city's progressively moving forward and everybody thinks we're asleep at the wheel, I want to make sure that the surrounding area knows that we're not asleep at the wheel. We're doing a state of the city. So who's gonna speak, it's a dinner on September the 20th, and we're doing dual roles, we're also gonna bring domestic violence awareness. So we'll have a special speaker talk about domestic violence, and then all the tabletops will be care packages that will donate to city women's shelters, things they need. This is just preliminary, this is, this has gone out, this will go out to the media, it'll go to, it'll go to Office Christie, and all the surrounding chambers in all of the cities. We expect a big turnout, so I just wanted y'all to know that before I start sending out the information.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to make a comment?
I wanted to share with the council one small item. I sent it to you in the email or a text message, I think, or maybe both. This was the ad that went out to Site Selector Magazine. This is just one of the ads that's going to national attention to start, to bring attention to the development potential of Com Brown Harbor.
My chili dog.
Yes, he just said. Shouldn't stop at Terry's.
I wish that's what I'd had. Oh, Lord.
It's freezing.
It sure is. There's good things in these again. Yeah, it was.
Okay, we're out of session 916. What's the favor of the council for INOP?
I make a motion that we extend the listing agreement with Cravy Realty with the city attorney's approval.
Second.
Can I have a review of it?
Yeah.
Do it again?
Yeah. What's the favor of the council? That's the second session on 916.
I make a motion that we extend the listing agreement with Cravy Realty with the city attorney's approval.
I second.
All the first say aye.
Aye.
Item B?
I make a motion that we appoint the mayor, Don Chapa, for the mediation with the Naismith lawsuit on Friday, February 2nd, 2016. Oh, I'm sorry. September 2nd.
I second.
All the first say aye.
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 Thank you.
Everybody.
Item C? No action. Okay. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All the first say aye.
Aye.
I had written Friday and it was just kind of like.
Oh, okay. Oh, seems to be.
We'll do it again next week. One, two, three.